Did y'all, uh, deal with condos? Was there some like, uh, poo, uh, issues? Getting a fire one or hold on all these buildings or just that building?
Yeah, I'm wondering, man. I guess the insurance is starting to happen here. It's kind of a messy situation. I heard about it, yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. Those people, yeah, new people out of Prudential were on going anywhere else many years ago. That guy's not there anymore, whoever it was. I mean, things have changed a lot more now, updated different things, so I mean...
It's a dangerous situation.
Yeah.
The town, the town might...
Yeah. They, they, they come. Thank God nobody has been close to it. So, are you like here doing your job?
That's the plan, I mean.
No, I bet.
Totally different world.
I bet.
I know.
The day thing, my hits about other families.
Get some good seats.
Okay. Yes, sir. You call? Hi, how are you? Doing fine. I met one of your friends, Joe.
I didn't know your friend.
Uh-huh, well, apparently he's your friend.
Somebody said they were a friend.
Well, he knew you, yeah, I was his friend.
Well, that's...
Joe Morris? We're in Kiwanis together, that's that next kid.
Yeah.
And then I met Dr. Miller, who I should've known, but I didn't, I never really met him.
Been with Joe in a long time.
He's in Kiwanis, too.
Yep. I thought I'd see Joe a couple of years, but I missed, I guess I missed him. Saw most of the others, though.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. Well, if you ever want to come to Kiwanis, let me know, you can be my guest.
Vic invites me.
Yeah.
Period.
They have a pretty good...
I have, I have, I need to go, I have a bit.
They have a really good turnout always, like, everybody likes to go to that.
Well, you know...
Yeah, y'all, uh, yeah, doing the council report.
Good southeastern...
Go to lunch, you know?
Okay.
Yeah. One thing I get like is that they tell us what we're having before we go.
Well, they used to, and now, you know, we're a little cold. Yeah, that's questionable, of course, and everything.
I met COVID excuses, you know?
COVID covers, COVID covers a lot, you know?
Okay.
Yeah. Well, if you ever want to come to Kiwanis, let me know, you can be my guest.
Vic invites me.
Yeah.
Period.
They have a pretty good...
I have, I have, I need to go, I have a bit.
They have a really good turnout always, like, everybody likes to go to that.
Well, you know...
Yeah, always, they always have, they always have a big club. There's a lot of them because of... Yeah, y'all, uh, yeah, doing the council report.
Good southeastern...
Go to lunch, you know?
Okay.
Yeah. One thing I get like is that they tell us what we're having before we go.
Well, they used to, and now, you know, we're a little cold. Yeah, that's questionable, of course, and everything.
I met COVID excuses, you know?
COVID covers, COVID covers a lot, you know?
Okay.
Well, let's see, we should only be here about eight hours since we got ten minutes to do this.
Hammond City Council Public Hearing Agenda, roll call please.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells. Councilman DiVittorio.
Present.
Councilman Andrews.
Present. Public hearing, non. Hammond City Council Regular Session Agenda, May eleventh, twenty, twenty-one. Roll call please.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells. Councilman DiVittorio.
Present.
Councilman Andrews.
Present. Before we move into our prayer on tonight, uh, those of you that come up to the mic, I ask that you speak clearly and loud into the mic. Please give your name and address. Also, we're going to make sure that we keep the proper respect in place on tonight. Respect the council, and the council's going to respect you, okay? We clear? All right. Now we're moving to our prayer. Chaplain Kincaid from North Oaks Medical Center.
May we join our hearts together in prayer? Heavenly Father, loving God, we approach your throne of grace, and we ask and give you thanks for your loving care and that you watch over us. Your loving hand may always be upon us, Lord. Father, watch over our mayor, our council, and all our city administrators. We ask for your wisdom and your strength in the matters before this council this day. We ask these things in your precious and holy name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Now for our pledge allegiance, I'll ask the Girl Scout Troop thirty-one zero eight, Kylie and Riley to come up, please. All veterans and active military, please render the proper salute.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies, before you go, come on. Thank you for coming out tonight to support your troop and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, that lunch you could have on the council.
Good job, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They want to take a picture?
Oh.
Thank you. All right, now moving on to our council reports. Mayor?
Uh, some of you may have noticed, we had a movie in town, Hans Bubby is the name of the movie, it's a one-day event, so, and today is up, it should be out of town, so, sorry for the inconvenience. Trying to get through downtown Southwest Railroad and around Cape Square Park, but, uh, that, uh, should be finished up today.
All right, uh, I've under the reports, we'll go ahead, is the Housing Committee ready for your presentation?
Good afternoon, thank you, my name is Daniel Ward, I live at ten-ten West Rockford Avenue, uh, Hank Oster. First of all, I'd like to, I guess, give you the names of the individuals that are on the committee. Obviously, some of you have appointed those people, and may, you may know some and not all. Uh, Daniel Crosby, Bishop Salee, Joe Mir, Karen Walsen, Erica Williamson, Williamson, sorry, Kyla Douglas, Lamar Marshall, Melanie Ricketts, Greg Knackther, Greg Drew, George Anthony, Matt Lyons, Tom Hogan, Ryan Barker, Hillary Broadwater, and myself, Daniel Ward. We had an introductory meeting led by Ms. DiVittorio and some of the city administration to give the members a brief explanation of who we were going to be and what our general purpose was. We also had a brief slideshow by Ms. Emily Hamilton from George Mason University on land use restrictions and affordable housing. We've had two other meetings that were formal, um, they are public record, and we have submitted, um, public requests to the city administration, so anyone's allowed for public comment. Uh, and we spent time on, in these two meetings, we really spent time on the big picture, and allowed each member to have their own thoughts and engage, uh, as a committee to see how we can move forward, uh, with providing a plan to, uh, to you, uh, to carry out. Uh, now I will turn it over to Mr. Greg Drew, who will go into some of our more detailed requests. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Greg Drew, uh, one-eleven North Oak Street. The, uh, what we need from the city is a list of blighted housing in the city, and also some kind of GeoMap of it, so we can see if they're clustered and what areas we need to try to look at. If there is a way of, uh, also doing a request proposal in order to try to get together with a group to get a better idea of what all that is, and to create a housing plan for us to be able to, uh, to be able to help get rid of some of the blight. And we would also request that this city have Bobby come and talk to us, so that he can give us an idea of the challenges that he has as a building official in fixing the light that we have in the, uh, in the city, and either getting the houses fixed or getting them torn down. And then, once they're torn down, getting an idea of what can be done to bring those properties back into commerce and the neighborhoods. Okay, any questions?
Mr. Drew, may I ask this question?
Yes.
Uh, have y'all, you, you submitted that to the city already?
That's, that's what we're doing.
Tonight, okay, okay.
Yeah, yes.
I think that's a great idea, I agree with you on that, uh, so, are you, that's, that's going to be on y'all's next meeting? Y'all are going to be talking about that topic?
Lack of Bobby come to the next meeting impossible, uh, and, and then, I think that a request for proposal isn't something that would come from us, I think it would like to come from y'all, uh, but Lamar will be able to talk a little bit more about that.
So, this is, um, an example of...
That's an example of a request proposal, yeah. Uh, Lamar got that from one of the adjacent parishes.
Mr. Drew, when is your, your next scheduled meeting?
April twentieth.
May twentieth?
May twentieth.
May twentieth, okay.
Yeah, April's done.
And what time do you guys meet?
Five-thirty?
Five-thirty?
Yeah. Here.
All right.
Is it for me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, to wrap it up, um, Lamar Marshall, a level four, Rochelle, Hammond, Louisiana. Um, to wrap it up, uh, we, we're really excited about this opportunity, and thank you, Councilman DiVittorio, for getting this started, and really, um, working hard, the team has been really engaged, it's a, it's a, it's a big task, and we're not trying to reinvent the wheel, we're not, we're just trying to give a blueprint that, that, that we can use to, to improve the, um, you know, to look at the overall housing opportunities in the city. So, what we, what we talked about was this request for proposal, and this isn't like reinventing the wheel, this is an example that Jefferson Parish has put out, I think back in twenty-seventeen. So, the whole goal is to try to have an idea of the scope of the area that we want to try to target, that we want to look at trying to really work on, uh, this residential renaissance is kind of what we're talking about. So, when we look at that space, and then looking within that area and see what, what are the housing needs, what are the housing opportunities, um, you know, what do we have as infrastructure, what do we have sidewalks, we have this, we have these, what are the things that we need to kind of score the different areas, which allows us to kind of target where we want to go. So, our suggestion is to, to do an RFP, and, and there's, there are companies out there that can do that type of work, so we're going to encourage the administration and the council to move forward with something like that. That's an example of what, that doesn't mean you have to do the entire thing, you can do some all or create your own, we just want to give you something to look at, some kind of a benchmark. We could kind of decide, because I know Lacey, doing an RFP would be a big deal, so we just thought we would share what we've been looking at, and hopefully you guys are coming with something good that we can use, and ultimately get, uh, get that, get something like that, so we can use it as a tool in our committee to kind of start thinking about where we want to go and make recommendations to the council.
So, Mr. Marshall, what you're asking, uh, to actually get the ball started with your next meeting on the twentieth, you would like Mr. Milton to come to that meeting?
Yeah, the committee, the committee has recommended that we have Bobby pitch a there, so we can have a, an in-depth discussion about blight, overall strategy, and also just to understand, because we have a lot of committee members that aren't familiar, you know, I have some understanding, but I thought it would be best coming from the, from the city to discuss the questions that the committee has, uh, you know, you know, the overall plan, you know, when, how's it getting torn down, how long does it take, what happens when it's torn down, where, who pays for it, what's the funding, what's the budget for demolition, or, you know, I kind of understand that, but I felt like it would be best coming from somebody on, you know, you know, like Bobby, or, or whomever y'all would, y'all would think necessary to come to, to represent the city.
That's a great idea. Um, I have a question. With this request for proposal, obviously just getting it, I'm not, I haven't read it all, it's pretty long, I, I guess...
It's twenty-two days, huh?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm kind of wondering what this is, I see that they, the purpose is to conduct an assessment of fair housing, so is this specifically you guys are looking for that, or something broader?
I think, I think that's just an overarching kind of conversation, and I think what it gets into is, is really identifying where, where we can grow and increase, you know, um, residential housing in the city. We're obviously looking at, there's a lot more stuff we want to talk about, but we want to kind of give, you know, talk about it in small pieces, so this, in, in this case, we would be looking at, here's the footprint of Hammond, here's what we have, here's where we have opportunities to grow housing, to build housing, here's where we have property that's available, potentially available, where, where we, here's where we have areas that have ideal locations to build, because they have access to hospitals, roads, you know, recreation, schools, all those things that come into play. So, if you had somebody, a company that can actually do that assessment for us, we're not really designed to do that type of, but you really need to have that level of an assessment, so you can plan properly, you know, we all have ideas, but I think having, I mean, the committee feels that having some type of document like that would really allow us to make real meaningful decisions.
So, but what I'm trying to understand, just because I am not familiar with this whatsoever, we would be asking like a consultant to come in and look at, uh, this is the zoning, this is the neighborhoods, this is the overlay, these are the rules, this is our challenges, and giving like a report?
Or, this is where we have, this is where we have inventory, lack of inventory of housing, these are areas where we haven't had sales in years, these are areas that have lots of vacant land, lots of property, these are areas that with some infrastructure improvements can really become, you know, areas that, that will be places where people want to...
Invest, yeah.
Live and invest, this is where developers would want to look at, so all those type of things that you can, you can really create a plan, and then the, then the city and the city administration, the council now has a plan that, you know, allows you to make policy, make decisions, make financial decisions, all those type of things based on, now, now that's just an example of Jefferson Parish. So, you can, you can make, create your own RFP, which Lacey surely knows that, or, you know, because she's done several of those before, but if you have a benchmark of where you can start, you can delete, add, adjust, recreate, based on what the city thinks is necessary, that's just pretty much an example of what one could look like, that doesn't mean that's the one we're going to have. Okay? Any other questions? Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Lamar, uh, I just want to say thank you for your whole group, for the whole group, what y'all doing, and this, we might not see it right now, but this kind of helping Hammond move forward and making better people come to our area and investing in our area, so I thank you, started one or two people coming in, investing in our area, that we can get more to come to do the, the housing, uh, you know, whatever they can do to make our area better, because I definitely need it in my area.
Well, we have a lot of good people on the committee, Greg Drew's there, you know, those guys are saying all that, Dan LaBord, those guys understand the business, they know what's, and then we have a lot of like Karens there, here, we have people, you know, who are community organizers, you know, you have, we have all, we have, it's, it's a, it's a very diverse group of people that have a lot of opinions, and I think, I think that's a good thing, because no one's going to just, it's not going to just be one way, it's going to really be a comprehensive look at what we can create, some type of a blueprint that the city can use to, to make these type of decisions. Whether you make decisions or not, it's going to be totally up to you guys, we're not, we're not, that's not our job, our job is to say, here's a plan that we think makes sense, and that will be up to the council and the administration to decide, you know, what direction we go. But, but, that's, most of the stuff that you're hearing tonight is coming from that committee, it's not like one person's making that decision, so just to let you know that.
And then after the survey is done, you pretty much can pinpoint what's the main important, or itemize it, prioritize it.
We have some long meetings, and to discuss, you know, theories, we're not really rushing at all, we're just trying to really create, allow us a real dialogue, because there are lots of, lots of issues that we got to really bring into a conversation, if you do all that, that gives you a chance to make a better decision, because you're bringing in a lot of details, a lot of opinions, some emotions, some facts, and all that together makes good decisions, so that's what we're doing, so I appreciate you recognizing that.
No, no, I thank you, but I do, I will challenge the, uh, the councilman myself, because I'd have been out to y'all meeting one time, and I say to the councilman, we need to start going out and see exactly what they're talking about, what was going on, because can't no one or two people stand up here and tell you in five minutes what's going on in all they meeting, so, I just want to say once again, thank all of y'all for, you know, volunteering and helping and just trying to make Hammond itself a better place, so thank you once again.
Good evening. Uh, my question, I'm Sandra Weary, one oh two Route Drive, Hammond, Louisiana District One. My question is, there's someone on the committee that's like been in poverty and knows what it is to live in that area, know the community real well, is there, is there someone on the committee that records it?
Like, how long ago did that have to been part of? I mean, that's...
Yes.
That's our relative, I mean, yes, I think we have...
No, I mean, it's still there, basically, it's still there.
Well, this is not just about Harley, this is about the whole entire community, uh, we're addressing all gamuts of, of life in Hammond from all different, from all different communities, and, and trying to make a, make the overall Hammond residential infrastructure a, a positive thing that we can grow. That's, that's the overall goal, so yes, to answer your question, I don't know anyone's socioeconomic status, whether, how much income they have, but I do believe that we've had, and Greg and Andy can tell you, and Chris and Karen can tell you, with, every discussion that we've had has been a challenge that we, that we, that we, that we talk about all aspects, even how we talk about things, we, I got a call up in there, and even how we address terms that we use, um, we've had members say, hey, let's make sure we're inclusive, let's make sure we involve everybody, let's make sure we're not alienating any group of people in the city, so we, we feel pretty good, so, yeah.
I understand that what you're saying, however, unless you've been somewhere, you really can't say what's, if that's, you walk in somebody's shoes, you really cannot say what's going on, you can't, that's all I'm saying. Somebody, and I'm not saying I got to be the one, but somebody like myself, I mean, not prof, only professional people.
We have, we have a very diverse group of people.
Very well-rounded, it was, it was started, it was started this, yeah, it was just recently started, the first one, and it was, it was set up with sixteen members, so, so you have, you have appointments by councilmen, representatives, state representatives, and, uh, so it's, it's all a well-rounded group of people, and diverse in different areas of life, I mean...
This is a public meeting, so Sandra, you're more than welcome to come and participate in the conversation, we'd love to have you to participate if you want to.
Absolutely.
You're, you're, and also seriously, you're more than welcome to come in any, any of which you can, is all the benefits, because we're in the exploring stage, so this would be a great time for you to show up and share your, your input, and make sure that that's a part of the conversation.
And for that question, Miss Sand, they really do, because I want to make sure the people that I selected, they know about everybody, so, the Lamar, he is right on that, he's telling the truth, we really do have some people that started from the bottom, that come from the bottom, that done worked their way up, so, they, he can't, he telling the truth, because I know, when I pick somebody, or when I ask somebody to do something, I look at where we come from, where we been, and where we going, so I can sit here and say who I pick, that I know a hundred percent got the love and got the feel for the city of Hammond like I do, so I know this here without a doubt. Thank you. May twen... May twentieth, five-thirty PM, right here in, in the City Council Chamber. Any other council reports? Steve? Councilwoman Gonzalez?
No, thank you.
I got a couple, yeah, all right, uh, I wanted to thank Robert Morgan with the Streets and Drainers Department, they did a super job, him and his guys, as usual, um, always come out, do a great job, I will say that, uh, you know, hands off to him always, hats off to him, he's always done a super job, um, very proud to have him part of us. Um, I wanted to ask, uh, Mayor, the cover pavilion update, how we looking on that? Do you have any kind of projected date on the cover?
Jackson Park?
Yeah, Jackson Park, yeah.
Now, like I said before, whenever they can get out there next, they had a, uh, issue, there was an emergency with the jail, with the stairwell, that they had to get out there and look at, and as soon as they can, from what Robert, I think, told you, uh, the contractor wants to finish it up as much as they want to finish.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure, I mean, we've been working on it for a while, so, I mean, you ordered a couple of weeks ago, I just want to make sure we kind of start getting to finish this project up, so, just want to make sure we get a little update, so, um, let's see, uh, code enforcement, I sent a couple emails, I didn't get a response, a copy of administration to it, just wanted to check on the, the boxing ring events on Alida, on the commercial, did you get the email, Lacey and Pete?
They're not getting approved by me yet.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I didn't respond, I wanted to make sure it was taken care of, or...
I saw a response that Bobby had given you on the covering over that vehicle.
I, I didn't get it, I don't know, maybe, maybe it didn't go through, it might have been email problems, but I checked it, Bobby, yeah, Bobby, can you come up? Give me an update, please.
I heard you. I'll be more than happy to make that meeting next week as well. Yeah, there is a, uh, there's an issue with determining whether or not, under and above, and kind of sifting through the possibility of the rules, as to whether or not we could classify the abandonment of the vehicles with the, uh, parking on private property, so that's what we are, yeah, as in one of the previous events, I responded to this.
Well, yeah, I didn't get it on Lou, but, I mean, I'm going to check it again, but I didn't get, I just, I was just want to make sure that y'all are in process of, of investigating it, or, or where we're at as today's status, that's it.
That's in terms of, I want to make sure I'm answering you correctly, this is in terms of the, of the blight behind the structures?
Yeah, the scrapyard behind, yeah, yeah, pretty much, yeah, so that, so you, what are y'all, the scrapyard behind the, the rear of the, the property, residence property, has that already been addressed?
That's been addressed.
Done, the one we said, okay.
So, on the, on the gym property, one oh five is the physical address of that, and one twenty-four for the residence.
Residents, yeah.
Both of those in rerores have been addressed.
Okay.
The, the scrapyard for the one oh five, which is the gym, has been cleared up, we have to focus on that.
Okay.
Still working on the residential portion.
Okay. All right, so, and that's in process, one twenty-four?
Correct.
Okay, all right, and then, uh...
You also sent emails, uh, for additional addresses with vehicles parked on the railways.
I think so.
Still just pending for the determination.
Okay, so just pending right now, okay, that'll work, I was just looking for a status update, I appreciate it, thank you.
One question, Bob, before you ease back to your seat, uh, any update for me on the building across the street from the Terrace Department, Dell?
Yes, that, that building is coming to council, uh, next month in June, for condemnation, that we were, we were trying to see if we could, uh, do an expedite.
And that's what I was hoping that you can do, because I'll say it like this, when I pass by, there's a lot of kids over there playing, even though there are signs up there, those kids don't read those signs, and somebody's going to get hurt.
Which house is this?
It's not a house, it's a, used to be a stand, and somebody ran into it, and it's messed up pretty bad. Uh, and went, we went through the process of getting the power and all that stuff cut from it, but it's still just sitting there, and it's, I'm talking about kids play over there, and somebody is going to get hurt, and, uh, I've been trying to find out, I know that the property does not belong to the city, but however, the city's been maintaining their property, been cutting the grass on it and all that stuff for years, so, if there's a way we can expedite that, I would greatly appreciate it, uh, to the fullest, because the simple fact that I'm asking, somebody's going to get hurt, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm...
I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just being honest. And, uh, you know, I, I've stopped over there and asked them, please move away from over there. You know, I know the signs is up, but like I said, those kids not reading those signs at all.
I actually reached out to the street department because they were the ones maintaining the property, to see if, if there was some kind of way we could collaborate with them to get it torn down. And hopefully I'll get a response from them this week if we can maybe overstep those procedures and, and do that courtesy.
If you can, I would, I would, I would greatly appreciate it because I, I receive calls and constant stop bys daily on, on that, and I keep telling them, we working on it, we working on it, and, you know, just like singing to the choir, they don't, you know, they think, some of them think I'm lying to them, some of them believe me, but, you know, and, but, uh.
Well, I'll say this, councilman, if we can't get it resolved, uh, this week, I think we'll do barricades, fencing, so that we wouldn't be, uh, kind of trailed by the kids, maybe we go that route.
Okay, we could, we could try, but I, anything's possible, they could climb over there. It got to the point the other day, I almost got me a sledgehammer to go over there and start trying to take it down myself. Because, you know, it's, it's, it's a constant daily thing, you know, Monday through Monday.
Wow.
Yeah, so, uh, but if, if, if there's a way, I would greatly appreciate it. But if not, we'll have to follow whatever process.
I got one more thing.
Just be true.
Yeah, um, do y'all do, or y'all got an upcoming, like, work session or something amongst the code enforcement department? Because it just seems like there's really never really a direction as far as, you know, when I sit and meet with you and Andre, it just seems like, you know, there, there's, there's like a little confusion on as far as what can be enforced and what can't be enforced, or if the rules need to be maybe modified, upgraded, updated, to improve, uh, your job, make it easier on you, make it clearer, and, and maybe we'd get a little more results quicker than what we, what we have. Because, I mean, a lot of these topics have been going on for two to ten years, and so that's why, you know, and, and it just seems like if I don't continue to keep following up with it, it just seems like it just gets lost, so. And it shouldn't have to, you know, it should be easier processed than, than what I see it is. And if it's, the rules aren't done right, if the attorney is having trouble, you know, understanding them, you know, I don't know what, but we need to get a better system to where the code enforcement can be clear-cut and we can get some of these issues addressed because it cleans up the entire city and fixes a lot of problems. So I don't know, is there a work, do y'all do this a year, every year, like, look at things that can be improved, or do we need to set a meeting up for that?
Well, uh, to answer your que-, I, I know exactly which ones you're talking about, the ones that are, that are borderline as to whether or not they classify as being valid or invalid. We're, we're following the rules that are set in place. Uh, in order to modify or change those rules, that would have to be the, the pleasure of the council to make, to make amendments to those ordinances, to make them more stringent, more enforceable, with stricter penalties on those.
Yeah, well, I mean, you deal with it pretty much every day, so I'm sure you probably have a list of suggestions, I'd imagine, that might help your job out, that maybe needs to be communicated to the council.
Andre, do you want to talk about what you and Cece had worked on prior?
Oh, you finished talking? Yeah, I'm talking, yeah, well, not really, yeah.
Yeah, you finished talking?
You need to say something?
No, because I'm just saying, they just started talking while you was talking.
All right, no, I'm good, go ahead, Andre.
No, no, I've sent a couple of ordinances out, I believe, to council members for comment or review, Sam, I think on enforcement, on one, one we sent back to the, um, planning and zoning with Tracy to ask for definitions of that parking issue we have with vehicles and to change that.
Yeah.
So we have some things in motion, I'm happy to follow up again, but I've sent ordinances out.
Okay.
For review and comment, and I'm just waiting on feedback before they get presented.
All right, well, uh, yeah, I mean, maybe, yeah, well, I mean, I'm, I'm open for that, I don't know if we need to organize some kind of little meeting, uh, next, you know, couple of weeks, whenever, I mean, if you, yeah, and then we can get this moving forward because, uh, I would like to improve some of the issues. So, uh, I'm done now, thank you.
Well, we just want to be, be mindful of the fact that we don't want to cross the line of violating citizens' rights either with the enforcement.
I agree, I agree, yeah. All right, thank you.
Bobby, my question that hard, why you up here? I got Ms. Kathy, uh, Monticello, uh, a pharmacy that councilman, down nearby, what, Club A L A, AAA, you know, triple?
South Marsh.
It's South Marsh, okay, right there, the street, they having problems with the, I guess with the landowner, with the trailers, and I don't know who this for, because I know we just passed this the other day, a route where trucks or trailers can go to. We just passed this, but the problem, she say they have been on their street, that the trailers are standing in the street for like hours and days at a time before they move them. I know, I don't know if this for you or what, but, uh, I know you're in code enforcement. Then another thing she was telling me, that they actually took the covers out the ditch so it's holding water on their back end of the property, and I don't know about that, but that was she was telling me, so I told her I will address you or whoever at the council meeting, I wasn't looking for you tonight. And so she just sent me this, her text, uh, about forty minutes ago, and so if you get a chance, could you check on it and see what we can do about that? Uh, how long could a trailer sit in the street? House trailer?
This is during the transporting process?
Yes.
And I can't understand why they're, why they're holding it in the street. That's, that's not my department.
Okay.
I just can't imagine, unless they're trying to find somewhere to park them, uh, maneuvering some on the property, it's still.
Yeah, because she say what's going on with it, uh, the parents have to go pick their kids up from school and hear trailers sitting in the street and they can't even get out. So to me, I think this would be a hazard for the fire department and even the police department trying to get in there because this, this in the city limits. So, you know, see if you can find somebody in that department and let me know if you get a chance, please.
Yeah, I'll reach out to the police department, I think police and possibly streets with the drainage.
Well, she say she been calling the police, but the police come there and they don't know what to do. Now, this not coming from me now, this coming from Ms. Kathy. So this what she told me because I asked her who all she reached out to. So that's it, that's it for me, Bobby, I'll get you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you, but, uh, thank you, Bobby. Uh, more serious now, we got a problem in our community, District Three, and I have Ms. Brown, she would like to come up here and tell you. Well, you not hearing it from me, you can hear it from the people in the residents, what's going on in our community in District Three. Can you come up, Ms. Brown, please?
Good evening, George.
Good evening.
Uh, I'm here to make, uh, complaint.
Ma'am, could you give us your, your name and address, please?
Well, he just told you, my name is Margaret Brown, I'm sorry. And I live on Mooney Avenue. And I'm here to talk about the shooting that goes on out in the Mooney Avenue area. We need some security out in that area. We have been asking for security, but no one seems to take interest. I don't know why, or maybe some of you all could tell me why there's no interest out there. I've been living there all my life, and we're having too much shooting going on in that area. I had an adjuster to come to check my house for roofing problems, and she told me there were bullets that was holes in my roof. So therefore, I need help. We need help in that area. Can you all give me a suggestion, what should I do?
Well, I can tell you that they had a, a party last week.
Who was this?
This is me.
Oh, there, that's the man.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. Good evening. So this is going on around the entire city, and we will ask the chief to come up and speak in a second as well, as far as our response time to any call that's brought, sent in to them. As far as the children shooting, we had a, we had a party one street over from Mooney Park last week, uh, there was shooting, we went there, obviously as soon as the police officers pull up, uh, no one knew who did it, the person wasn't there. Uh, it's an ongoing problem around the city.
Well, I'm speaking about Mooney right now.
Okay.
My heart goes out to everyone, don't get me wrong. But we need someone that can stay there for some time, maybe from four to about twelve A M. or, and then someone come on again. Because the shooting that goes on is late in the morning time. That's when it's shooting. Uh, it wakes me up. It's light is right there in my window, uh, in my doorway. And we need some security. I'm asking each and every one of you all for help. It was on my rooftop. My mother was there during that time, but she's deceased now, she passed at age one hundred. And her room was back in that area. She could have gotten shot and killed. So you all know how that makes me feel. I need help. Thank you.
Chief, come give us a comment on your response times and what you think you can do and have been doing, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chief, I understand, before you, before you, uh, make a comment, uh, I understand, uh, you got response time, but I think what Ms. Brown is basically stating is that if somebody's presence is always there, you won't need a response time, if somebody's there. Uh, I've received phone calls from basically about the same thing over, off of Hoover Magazine Street, somebody come through there with a AK forty seven a couple of nights ago and somebody lit it up. And after they lit it up, I was up for the rest of the night, addressing phone calls. I do appreciate the response time, but I, I, I think majority of the issue of what's being addressed, and it's not personally against nobody, but it being addressed, or what's being stated is more presence. I believe that if I see you more, it's the less things I'm trying to pull off to try to do something if I know that you are constantly moving around there.
Well, I agree with you, I certainly agree with that. Our, our response times are, are good, I understand that doesn't solve the problem, you want to see us more in there. We have started a neighborhood initiative about three or four weeks ago. With that neighborhood initiative, I've got about twenty-five different offices that work strictly in the neighborhoods for two to four hours out of town. And I explain to every one of them, I want them in the areas, in the neighborhoods, off the main streets, we don't need anybody on the main streets, we get enough that covered we need, in the neighborhoods. I've got all of the people that generally work eight to four, they getting off at four o'clock and they hitting every, every district. I've got other teams of people coming out at different hours, uh, we making, we making some serious efforts and, and trying to keep people in the neighborhoods. I think we have improved that a lot in the last four weeks. Could it get a little bit better? Probably so. Uh, and I expect that to happen. We have been, it's been told before that we were here, um, our officers have been sitting in the neighborhood and hearing the shots go off as well as the, the residents. I, I get that. That's not, they want to hear us putting people in jail, stopping the people from shooting. And we have made a lot of arrests, um, we have confiscated a lot of weapons, we believe that we arrested a couple of people in the last couple of weeks that's been responsible for a lot of shootings, or if they wasn't doing the shooting, they were having people doing the shooting for them. And we feel pretty confident that we got several people in jail recently that's going to help slow it down. This, no, I wouldn't be happy until it completely stops, you know? And I'll, I'll just tell you that, you know, I will address it again first thing in the morning, to try to make some changes if we have to, to alter the times a little bit. Uh, I know Ms., uh, is it Ms. Davis?
Ms. Brown.
Ms. Brown, sorry. Ms. Brown said that it happens a lot at night. While that, while that is true, a lot of our shootings have been in the afternoons. We've had two murders between two o'clock and five o'clock in the afternoon. We've had a lot of shootings in the afternoons. And that's why we making all efforts that we can to keep people in the neighborhoods. That's where we need to be. We need to be down there, from Mooney Avenue Park, we was down there the other day, had one of my officers right there on the other side of, of, of the park, south, and they had a shooting off a scanner. They were right there, but that doesn't, that doesn't stop it, you know? I mean, I get that everybody wants it stopped, I want it stopped. I certainly would, uh, would love to have everybody asleep at night without ever getting round shot in their houses. But I'll just tell you that, you know, first thing in the morning, we'll meet and we'll probably pick up the efforts, try to help this problem the best we can.
All right, Chief, I want to say thank you, but it still ain't solving no problem for us, and I want to hear what the solution was going to be. And so Ms. Brown, she just like a mother to me. Been knowing me all my life, eat out of house all the time, and, and I'd have said this before, our resident is real close, and what you just said, nothing against you, an excuse. We can't handle no more excuses, because I look at it like this here, if something was to happen to her, if something was to happen to Ms. Ernestine, if something was to happen to Ms. Andrew, Renee, Renee daughter, this is what I see, especially my wife. And I'm saying this here, my opinion is too much for Hammond. I think we need to get the sheriff department involved and the city councilman, hopefully we can come up with a budget that we can fund the sheriff department to come down there and help because I, I look at, just like right now, uh, they got a movie going on, a movie shot going on in Hammond, right?
Right.
Hell, they got all the security right now.
All right.
And it, they just coming down here and they gonna be gone. Everybody over there stay here, every day. These are taxpayers, and we are cheating the taxpayer of what's due to them. Z Mary, every time I go through there, I see a police over there. And I really believe, and I hope I'm lying, like, every time I don't vote on something, that it becomes personal, not with you. You know, it become personal, but we can't get security there, or we can't get a police there, I don't know what to say. I told Ms. Brown, I said, you know what, Ms. Brown, I really think it's personal, they not coming out in the area because of me. The mayor, he done been in the area and he done talked to a few people, and when the mayor come out, uh, he sat there, make some phone call, and, yeah, they come out right then and there. The mayor leaving in about five minutes, and guess what? The police leave two minutes after the mayor. You know, and, and I'm saying this here because it's serious, because we know this here. You and law enforcement, when people shoot, a lot of times, and we talking about kids that have no training with weapons, somehow it always hit the wrong person. That's what I'm afraid of, from four o'clock in the evening to twelve o'clock at night. And I'd have sat here and said it numerous of times about get a police car, put it in the park, get a police car, put it in the park. I say these things over and over again till I get tired of myself saying it. And I told Ms. Brown, we done talked several times, she gonna call me one o'clock in the morning, uh, my neighborhood name, Dale, Dale, did you hear that? No? Well, come down here. No, Ms. Margaret, they shooting. Why want you to hear? And, uh, yeah, I think I heard it now, because I gotta let her know I heard the shot when I didn't hear the shot. And I know this not only from her, like, two weeks ago, uh, the woman was in her yard, the scanner. Like, two weeks ago, uh, the woman was in her yard, the scanner street, what you talking about, in her car. And guess what? They shooting in her yard. And, and all this here coming from the park. And like I tell people, is the park bad? Or is the people in the park? Because I grew up, I was raised in that park. I didn't see nothing wrong with the park, nah. I'm scared to go to the park myself. And we know how the park look, ain't nothing in the park. But it's the people that's coming to the park. So it's something that we need to do now. Not tomorrow, not next week. Because I look at it like this here. If it was your mother, your mother, your mother, your mother. Especially, I'm gonna say my grandmother, she deceased. If it was her, no telling what I would do. And I'm saying that's how personal it's getting, you know? I talked to, uh, the police department. And just last week, I heard the mayor say, we give a block party. And in the process of having that block party, a lot of hell went through the neighborhood. From the four-wheelers to the dirt bikes, this. The mayor gave them the okay to have this party, they blocked the street off. One of my resident called the police department, dispatch, called twice. Dispatch is just out of control, but realize what this older lady going through when she hearing the dirt bikes, the four-wheelers, the, uh, gunshots. And I say this here, and I'm gonna say it again on the record. Anybody, I don't care who it is, anybody in the community on a four-wheeler and a dirt bike, take them to jail. Tote the vehicle, tow the car. And I say, it's so funny. I done been stopped four times by the police department. Uh, your license plate, the light wasn't working. Uh, we didn't see your inspection sticker. I say, man, they stopping me for this? But they don't see the four-wheelers that don't even supposed to be on the road. My car, registration, insurance, everything, driving license, I got everything I supposed to have on my car. But yet, he these kids, and I'm calling them kids, with four and five people riding on them that don't know how to ride on them, that we have to do something. Because I'm talking about Ms. Brown. She drive, and she ain't the best driver in the world. But I say this here, what if she hit one of them, or one of them hit her? And that's what I look at, and this is what I've been talking about all the time. We have to find a way to stop it now. Because it going to get out of our hands. It going to get out the police department's hand. And so we know what we dealing with right now. We seeing, we hearing it all the times in our district, in the majority black district. I'm just going to say it like that. That these kids are getting killed. And we have to find a way to stop it, or slow it down. So if a police around, and I tell everybody, I ain't going to say it on the mic, because you know I be drinking and stuff, but the police around, he might stop me from drinking. So I ain't going to drink if I see a police. You know, every time I say something, somehow it come true. So I ain't going to drink no more when the police around. But I'm saying, we have to have the police present in our community. I'm talking about starting tonight. We have to. And if the police department can't come, get the sheriff department. If the sheriff department can't come, get the state trooper. And even the incident, and I'm going to talk about it, Club Eighty-One had a guy that get killed in the club in Tashpa. And you know what? The sheriff department, the state troopers, everybody worked that case. And I say, you know what? Why we can't work these cases before somebody die? Thank you, Chief. Appreciate everything.
Okay. I, I agree with you about the motorbikes and the four-wheelers. A friend of mine had a, a birthday Saturday, and I was, I was in your neighborhood Saturday, my personal vehicle. I witnessed the four-wheelers, I witnessed the motorbikes, I witnessed the street closing. I missed, I witnessed the party in the street. I saw it all. I understand what you're saying. I don't take it lightly at all. I think the Hammond Police Department does a good job at what we do. Do we satisfy everyone? No. We, we would certainly like to. The security for the movie detail, that's not people that assign the streets to work today. That's people that are off, that are working at off-duty. That's an off-duty detail. We have, again, we have made some efforts. We're going to try to make some more efforts. And I, I can give you my word on that.
Chief, I wanted to ask you about the motorbikes. I mean, has any of them been ticketed or, or towed? Or y'all just see it and then just let it go?
We have given tickets, we have towed vehicles. We have towed the four-wheelers, we have towed the motorbikes. When they get them out, or they replace them with, with another. And it's not regular four-wheelers either, from what I saw Saturday. These are those souped-up four-wheelers. These are the ones that really, they don't just go like you would ride across your yard. These are the ones I would think that you would bring to somewhere and race them. They very quick. One of them went through the stop sign at Harold and Reed Saturday afternoon, by the way. There's three signs there. When he got through, there was two signs. He slid the motorbike right through one of them, picked it up and took off, just that fast. So I understand your concerns, understand Ms. Brown's concerns. We will make every effort to improve what we doing to help rectify this problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I come up?
Yes.
Uh, concerning the, uh, police presence and stuff in the park. I see police is on a regular basis on J.W. Davis Street, where there's no residential area right there, other than the fact when you turn and go in that subdivision. And they parked there for a good, good while. So I think some of the police can practice parking over there by Mooney Avenue for a good, good while. Up there by Greenfield Missionary Baptist Church, you always got police parked up there to get the tickets. We got a stop sign right there by Mooney Avenue Park. That's a good place for, to assign them to sit there and be over there. And then to assign somebody to, uh, go around the area at least every thirty minutes or something. It can be stopped. Ain't no such thing as it can't be stopped. And if we got police going through there every thirty minutes, every hour, and have one stationary there from four to twelve, and I'm like, uh, what the policeman say? On the other Sunday, that was during the day, so on Sundays, they need to be there from twelve until back and forth over there by Mooney Park. Because I was raised up two houses down, right across from I ain't Margaret. And I love Mooney Avenue Park. And I hope to keep on making it better for the children. Because I have grandchildren and great-grandchildren coming. So we don't need to close the park. We just need to have security. Even if there has to be a security guard hired, whatever needs to be done. You say you're going to start on me morning, that would be a good start.
And I even asked for a substation, so that let you know I'm not playing. So if anybody, and I tell everybody, if you're doing something wrong, the police going to get you. Do not call me.
That's right.
When you doing something wrong, because, and I mean, chief, know right there, I never, and you going to hear me say it, I never went got nobody out of jail. Because I tell you, that's somewhere you don't have to go. So I'm going to say it again, I'm asking, I'm begging. We need a substation in our district. That's where they'll see where the police cars is. They will see them. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nina Minimah, and I live at fifty-two Whitmore Drive. I don't live in your district, but, um, and I'm just newly a resident, still kind of new to Hammond. Been here three years. But I just had a question for the chief. Is this neighborhood initiative a form of community policing? And have we researched and looked at other, um, forms of community policing that might be more effective? Where I'm from, I'm originally from Charleston, West Virginia, but we have issues in certain areas where they have shootings and guns, and people won't call the police because they don't show up. But what they have to do differently is to make more of a presence. And as we're hearing, people are asking, like, Ms. Brown says, where police were there during the day and the evening, making their rounds, but also living in the community. I don't know if there's more initiatives of trying to hire and recruit people from certain areas in the city, but having that presence where you know somebody that grew up with you and be like, oh, okay, I'm not going to do that because he or she lives here. You know, they do that in different, you know, communities all around the country. I'm sure in Louisiana, I don't know if we do that here. But I'm just, you know, curious if what we're doing right now, the neighborhood initiative, is that a form of community policing? And if you have researched, um, other alternative forms of community policing that are, has shown a track record to create that change that we're wanting and desiring here?
Ma'am, I'm going to answer your question. Uh, my wife and I, we did some research on community policing. It helped out a whole lot. The chief that we have in place now, he got to be the chief because of community policing. That's what he was supposed to do. And so that's the issue we having right now. The chief that I helped get in office, he not doing the community policing. So in our area, no, no community policing going on. And I said this here, and I said a thousand times, don't make it personal, how I vote or how I do. It's about the older people and the kids when it come to District Three. Those the ones I see first. Because somebody had to get old in order to have me, and I have to have a kid in order for them to go. So that's what I look out for. So everybody know in my district, that the community policing, they was supposed to come to the park, play basketball with the kids, everything, supposed to come have hot dogs with the kids. All these things, what you said, you was a hundred percent right. But you know what? When you come wanting to knock a head off and grab a head, that's why my community is scared to call the police. I just said it earlier. When they call the police, guess what the police do? Go right to their house. If I want you to know I called the police, I'd have got on the microphone and told you I'm finna call the police, get ready. So these are issues that we have in our community that nobody will never speak of. So the woman just called the police Saturday, and guess what? The police went right to her house. She say, councilman, if I wanted the police department to know, let the community know I called the police, I would have never did it. That's the one that, that was having the issue with the dispatcher. So see, I'm glad you're here, and thank you. That was all the problem that we are having. No, no community policing at all in District Three. You know, they might have one or two that they like, but it's not about the one or two they like. It's about all the citizens. Because guess what? Everybody over there are paying taxes. And that's where we fail to realize that these are taxpayers from the young to the old, and we're not getting the service.
And I know sometimes it may be money issues, and maybe if there are some grants or something that can be looked at to help to increase, you know, law enforcement presence, to help to dedicate to doing programs like that. But, uh, yeah, I'm one of those people that called the police. I had to call the police in my area for somebody that it sounded like a domestic violence situation. Someone was yelling, and then luckily, I guess other people called. Because sometimes you never know someone else that going to call. And the dispatcher said, oh, somebody else already reported it. But sometimes they do. Law enforcement goes right to your door, and then you're like, then I'm getting ran out. And I don't, I'm not sure if I want to call again, because then people are going to come, like, my neighbor, whoever I just told about doing that is going to start harassing me. But, you know, it is a thing, but I'm just like, hopefully I'm going to do this because I wouldn't want to be in a situation where somebody else doesn't call law enforcement, but does put you in a tricky situation.
Thank you so much. It really...
Could I, could you say your last name, please?
Um, M.I.N.I.M.A.H. I want to thank you.
And it does put you in a bad situation, because if you receive the phone call, and you call and tell them that you received the call and where to go, and they arrive and say the councilman sent us here. So, you know, this, so I, I, I can understand that, but, you know, it, it, it goes a two-way street, but...
I don't want to go long, but I do want to add one thing that you can correct me to kind of put a little bit of, put a little bit to the conversation. So, you know, I was a former city councilman, so I think the total number of law enforcement officers that we have in twenty-twenty-one has probably been the same since post, pre-two thousand and ten. I think that the city probably operates with maybe ten, maybe ten at the most, if everybody comes to work on a given night. So if I'm, is that pretty close?
Close.
Close. So we're still, so two thousand and ten, two thousand and five, we operated with ten offices. Two thousand and twenty-one, we operated with twenty, with ten offices. Also, the sheriff's department for the entire parish. Do you want to know how many officers they operate with on, on any given night? Probably nine for the entire parish. So when you visualize the entire, the entire parish of Tashpa, all the, all the unincorporated property that the, that the sheriff has to maintain and manage and oversee, or to patrol, they have nine officers for the entire parish. So we ask, so the city of Hammond operates with ten. The sheriff operates with none on any given night. Just, just to put it in context, as you guys think through those things.
Yeah.
You know, you might want to just put some numbers to it so you can also look at, what does that really look like? I, I would imagine the cost of an officer probably runs around sixty thousand bucks a year. You look at cars and salary and everything else, so that you got to kind of get an idea of, if I want to grow my, my law enforcement team to support the team, then it's probably going to be running somewhere around sixty thousand bucks per person. I'm just throwing a number out there. I don't know what the number looks like, but I'm sure it's probably pretty close. When you buy a car, when you pay salaries, and you do anything else, you know, it's probably going to be so. But, but to your point, Councilman Wells, I think that the number of officers that patrol the city of Hammond hasn't changed, been stagnant for probably two decades.
No, that's not true. In fact, the captain here, when I first came on, complained because we had seven patrol officers on shifts. And he was mentioning that we really should at least, we need to get, we need to boost them up. So we brought it up to ten officers on shift.
That's what I said, I said about nine to ten. It was about nine to ten.
Couple decades, twenty.
So give or take one or two, which you asked, that's scheduled, but you know, then people are off and, you know, that's different. But I was just trying to make, I was just saying, if you're going to talk about, I put some numbers to it because that means a lot, you know? It's just, it's just not a, it's a cost to do it, but you know, it hasn't, but it hasn't changed a whole lot, right? It's been pretty, pretty, pretty much between...
Well, three a shift is, is...
It's a basic.
Hey, we'd always take more, I'll tell you that.
Uh, Mr. Lamar, ask you a question since you said it. When the last time you heard a shooting in your neighborhood?
Oh, probably like every other weekend. Because...
You're not the only district, Rosewood. Yeah, but we got some more, but you took...
Well, we have issues that are like right there, if you want to ask the, I can answer for you. So right behind, that's where I live, is, uh, Willow Villa. And there's also a trailer park that sits behind there. I don't know the name by...
Klein, off of Klein Road, and then in the back, yeah.
But it, when I was on the council, it probably happened every other weekend. Now it happens every other weekend.
Okay.
So, yeah, so it's the same difference. We, we struggle with the same thing. Council of the Torrey gets calls all the time. We have a Facebook page in our community, and every, I can go to Facebook page right now and probably show you five, five residences that say, hey, we have a shooting. There's something coming from...
Bruce St. Martin area, Klein Road, and then Rosewood area. My, my area is of gunshots.
It's more than, Councilman Wells, to your point, there's a lot of shooting, there's, you know, shooting guns being fired all over.
Yeah. But I think what she said, if I'm not mistaken, and this is what I didn't hear none of y'all say. She say she got bullets in her roof. Yeah, that's the part that we need to hear.
I was just bringing up the number.
Yeah, no, I just, you know... Yeah, because, because I'm saying, when people talk, you know, and God knows, I don't care who talk in front of me or who behind me, but it's not about me, because one thing I do, I pray every day that God give me the wisdom and the knowledge to come up here and to be able to handle these situations that's going on. She said that she had gunshot, she got bullets in her roof. And this, and she stay, she stay in the neighborhood. And I told her this here, when you come up here, and I advise it for everybody, we're going to have to stop any people, give their address, give the name of their street, and Hammond. And I say this here because we got so many people out here that's not straight no more. And so God knows, and if you look, and we can pull the record up, I never called the police department. I don't call the police department for the simple fact that I don't want to deal with the lies. And when I do call the police, it somehow it always a story switch. So I just want to tell you, Lamar, that we scared. And, and, and I'm talking about, you know... And, and, and I'm talking about, you know, from Ms. Margaret having to jump on the floor, and I say this here, she don't want me to say her age, but she in her seventies. Just think about her jumping on the floor, because you know what? We have to learn how to survive. And see, this is what a lot of folks don't know, we have to learn how to survive. We didn't know how to survive, now we have to learn how to survive. So, guess what? She had to jump on the floor, and then she got called me if her kids ain't around, they have, come help me get up off this floor. See, this what we go through that don't nobody know about. And I'm talking about not only her, the woman was getting in her car. And I'm talking about from reverse to drive to forward, her grandkids in the car, this what we go through. So, you know, the, the, trying to correct me, trying to make me this way, that way, hell, that don't bother me. It's about my community, and that's my biggest concern, nothing else. That's all I want, is for her to leave here, go home and be safe. That's all I'm asking for. And if we asking for too much, just like I said, we need a solution. We need answers to the real problems.
All right, I realize that y'all have other business, but you said, the VA says we've got ten, uh, for trouble. How many additions we got?
Five.
Okay, we still can have one that's being opened in the area, because if they, uh, when something come over the mic, uh, you know, they down my rules. So, we still to do it, and still to be done.
You finished? All right. Sam, you got anything else?
I'm good, I'm good, Kip, thank you.
All right. Last thing upon my council report, again, I would like to thank all the teachers and the nurses last week with their appreciation for a job well done, especially with the nurses and in the medical field for the things that they have to go through within the last year. Also, with the teachers having to make changes in education dealing with our kids through the COVID-19, I take my hats off to them for a job well done. Also, I would like to thank the IT department for moving the screen and putting it back up over here for me. I really appreciate that as well. Andre, one quick question for you, uh, Spur.
Yes, the Hammond Depot, uh, excuse me, Home Depot, they have approved the lease, and I spoke with their lawyer the other day. It's just an administrative delay, I haven't got the signed signature back, but they have agreed with it on Graham Packaging. They got an email from him on Monday, they're gonna send a red line copy of the lease that we sent to them for our review as soon as possible. So, both of those are working, and they will be retroactive to February first.
President?
Yes.
Uh, last minute, I just, uh, the booking room incident, how everything come along with that?
Uh, okay, uh, May sixth, when we received a phone call from the lawyer and the video expert, they had plans to be here this week to, um, I guess you want to call it deposition to do interviews with several officers. They received a law, a letter from their attorney, which actually, two of the officers retained counsel. The other officers were stated that they talked with this particular lawyer, but had not been retained, and it said all the above.
I'm just asking, 'cause, uh, that was, they been asking me questions.
The officers declined to come. So, uh, that pushed us to another mode where I had them served with subpoenas for them to, to show up, so they're in the process of being served.
All right, thank you.
They've been served, all of, okay, well, everybody's been served, so.
May twenty-fourth, the charter review committee will have their next meeting, it will be here in the city chamber, council chambers at five thirty PM. Uh, one last thing I'd like to thank, Lacy, we had a, a meeting on, uh, last week, we discussed some things, uh, among the, we were leading the council and her as the city administration. Uh, we had a pretty good meeting, I thank you for your time, and, uh, we're gonna move forward on doing the right thing for the city. All right. That's all of my report. Moving on, uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, can I get a motion to approve our April twenty-seventh, twenty, twenty-one minutes?
Second.
First.
Yeah. Make a motion approve?
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DePaterio?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Next thing on the agenda, resolutions, none. Next, old business, none. New business, resolution number one.
A resolution to reappoint Shawna Seals for Hammond History District Commission for a four-year term from April first, twenty twenty-one to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Mayor Panapinto.
Uh, Shawna couldn't be here tonight, but she has served on the committee for us. Uh, she's retired from Exxon. She's been, uh, very diligent with, uh, her service to this, uh, commission, and I'm asking the councils for her approval to, for reappointment.
Anyone from the council? Anyone from the public? Anyone from YouTube?
Just say Shawna is a, definitely an asset to this committee, so I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DePaterio?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Resolution number two?
Number two, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the Lees and Department of Public Safety and Correction Office of Motor Vehicles and the City of Hammond to maintain a public tag agency in the city limits. Lacy Landry.
As explained to the council over email, um, this has been a longer relationship under prior mayor Mason Foster. The state decided to close all the Department of Motor Vehicle offices unless they were in a parish seat. So, Hammond had an office, AME had an office, but they decided to eliminate all the parish, all the offices that were not in the actual parish seat. So, at that time, they offered and said, if you can come up with a private partnership here, the state authorizes who these people can be. They give them permission to access their database, they have to pay for that permission, their annual subscription, they have to buy a lot of specialized equipment, um, to be able to operate in agreement with the state. That's what this, uh, arrangement is doing, is just suggesting that we continue this operation how it has been. Um, I know there was some confusion prior, uh, that perhaps the city funded this office. The city does not fund this office. Um, the office is funded through the, up to eighteen dollars per transaction, dependent on what the transactions are and whatnot. Those fees that you pay at the motor vehicle office is what comes back to the city, they stay in the motor vehicle fund, uh, which is two thirty-seven and has been represented in your budget for several years. Um, and those just go to pay the expenses. I did do a comparison to show the last few years, there has been a decline, um, and we've been using the fund balance in that, kind of like using your savings. So, um, we have to watch this.
Using their savings.
I'm sorry?
Using their savings.
Correct, we're just kind of their money, I mean, their bank, so to speak, but, um, we have to decide whether, you know, over this next year, we'll see whether this has been a trend of COVID, perhaps people are not buying vehicles as much as they have been, um, or if this is a continued decline in revenue.
If we were to say no to this, the money that's in here, who does it belong to?
That's a good question. I don't know.
I don't mean to complicate it, it's just a, just a question.
I don't know, I don't think it can be used for other purposes, but that would probably have to be a question of the state.
Yeah.
This fund has existed for many years, so...
I guess, uh, my question, I was one of, another question was, you know, what, you know, if, if the fee is, I mean, why do, I understand why in the beginning we were involved, but now, I mean, I don't really, you know, pretty much we're just a middleman to, to collect fees and, and then repay janitorials and everything else. I mean, I just, you know, don't, I mean, if we get out of it, then pretty much those funds are gonna be kept with them, and they can pay their own janitorial, utilities, miscellaneous, and lease agreements, correct?
I don't know that that relationship stays the same. The state partners with a local government entity. They don't partner with private entities. They, they like basically certify them to operate in that capacity, but they have to have a local government entity be a sponsor, so to speak.
But, do we, do we have any others? I thought we had a couple others in there. I thought it's the, you know, the little, the tag agreement where they can, other people can do this too. I think in the city, it just doesn't have to be a partnership with the city, I don't, I don't think. I'm pretty sure.
So, like Barbara Talos, she's not, this is not hers, but she is, she exists. That's, is that a different type of license?
In the past, I don't know what the current situation is, but in the past, there were only certain things that the Department of Motor Vehicle certified offices could perform. I know at one point, that was supposed to be that special passport. I don't know if that has changed. There were also some transaction that was involved with purchasing a car out of state and how that can be transferred. I don't know if that's still the case, we could ask the state and find out.
Yeah, and then another thing is, I wanted to ask about, uh, the, um, this is obviously only on the Times Square one, correct? The one, um, the, this budget income sheet, this isn't, they have two locations, so this is just the one in the shopping center, correct?
Correct.
And on the lease, who's on the lease? Is it, does the city is leasing it, or is it...
Yes, the city of Hammond has leased this for many years, even when it was a state office of motor vehicles.
Okay, so, currently right now, the city is on the lease right now?
That's correct.
Okay, and it's a month to month, or is it just renewed or whatnot? Like, we'd be liable for leasing?
We'd have to look at the lease terms, the, the lease originally, when it was signed, and I don't remember what the total period was, and I don't know if you remember, Andre, this is one of those that's been around for a long time. We used to pay a much higher price. We're in, um, the next phase of that lease with the lower price, which is great, um, but I don't remember what the full term is offhand.
I think if I'm not mistaken, Andre, and we should know this here, I think it was every three years that the lease was going down. It started at, so, it started at a higher price, but every three years it was going down. So, when the lease is up right now, before we get into this, when will the lease be up?
I did not look at the lease for the meeting. I didn't know there would be questions about the lease.
Yeah, okay, uh, and then, say this here, there was something that was done under Mason Foster. So, it was under his leadership. So, right now, we're under a new, we're under new leadership. So, uh, Mr. Mayor, what you think about this here right now, moving forward?
Since you have questions on the lease, and you're so good at doing it, I think this be a good time for you to table it.
Okay, yeah. And a reason I wanted to ask you, Mr. Mayor, thank you too, uh, I wanted to ask you because this here been puzzling me, and you know, every year, I'm gonna ask my questions about it. So, that's what I wanted to know, because altogether, we got four places in Hammond that do this. And every place you go to, they have a, uh, they can charge up to eighteen dollars for a transaction. And so, you can actually go to AME, which I done been to AME, I done been to Livingston, and you don't have to pay the eighteen dollars fees. So, and then, as a citizen of Hammond, why should Ms. Sandra go there and have to pay eighteen dollars when she already paying taxes in Hammond? So, if Hammond gonna have this here, I don't think anybody go with a Hammond ID or Hammond address, I don't think the residents should have to pay the eighteen dollars, you know? That's what I suggest. If, if they, 'cause Hammond doing this, right?
I'm not sure.
Okay, this what I'm saying. Okay, and Hammond took this on?
They're operating under the state, the state guidelines.
Okay.
It's a convenience.
Yeah, okay.
It's a convenient.
Okay, but, okay, it's a convenience, okay, this what we got, okay? They got one close by my house, it's convenient for me to go by, do one by my house, uh, they got one close by, I'm gonna say her house, and it's convenient for her to go there. So, that's what we need to look at, do we need to keep, you know, everything we do is convenient, but where is it costing us, or where the city is actually saving, and what benefit we actually getting out of this? Because I'm saying they got four locations that do this. That's what I'm stating, that's what I'm getting to.
And I guess my question, my concern really was, you know, was understanding the partnership, I think, was originally set up during that time when they were trying to get, you know, do away with all the DMVs and the convenience of the city, and that was great. I think over time, things have changed, and I just don't, you know, it's kind of like more work on the plate for, for, seems like really no reason, unless I'm missing something. If, if they don't really need us involved, or just pretty much being a middleman to get money and move it back, I mean, it'd be the same if we were, we're not involved unless I'm missing something. So, I guess that's kind of where my question is, is, is it just because we've always been doing it this way, and we never looked at it and see maybe, do we still need to be involved, or can we, you know, hand it back over and, and let them manage the, their deal here, their money, their funds? That's, that's where my question was, really.
It's my understanding in speaking with the state, they have a sponsorship, they need a local government sponsor to do this. So, that's why this has existed. They can't go and have a direct relationship with this office to perform these same services. I know that the city court was looking into doing the same type of arrangement, and that the costs, the overhead cost of buying all of the equipment, signing up for the annual subscription to the database was all gonna be, and then the bond insurance, I believe, that you have to carry was really costly.
I guess, I think you said you think, I'm not being disrespectful, but I think you said you think, so we really don't even really know officially, I guess we could, if that is still the case.
That's what he said, is that if the city court wanted to open it, he said that Mayor Panapinto would have to sponsor it as the local government entity, because there was confusion about the city court being part of Hammond City. And so, they said that the city court, since it is a local government entity, could do that themselves. But that's how it is in Baton Rouge, that's how it is here. They have to have a sponsor of a local government entity in order for all of these, I don't recall offhand, and I didn't realize there were all these questions. Anytime we can get questions in advance, we can prepare more information for you. So, we'll be happy to go and research more information for you. Perhaps we could have someone from the state come in and speak about the difference between the types of offices and the way that they're audited. Anything that you'd like, we're happy to do that, it's just difficult to know.
We did have them come back, come in the past, so we can get the state hopefully back.
So, who's paying the rent? Uh, we are, or the tenants, or...
The fee, the fee that I go, if I go, in fact, I will have to go this week and get my driver's license renewed. And if I go to the Hammond office for the convenience of doing it there, then I pay an extra...
No, I'm just saying directly, who's actually paying the rent each month?
The city of Hammond...
The city of Hammond's writing the rent?
To Times Square each month. We are the, we are on the lease for that property. But I can get you all the lease terms, I can get a copy of the lease for you, we can look at what the arrangement is. I don't think it's three years, but could be wrong, be happy to research it.
And I'm gonna say this here, for everybody to know, I think I make it very clear that anybody come up here, be prepared to answer questions. Uh, you might not have an answer right now, but you can always find the answer, get the answer. And I say this here because I'm learning every day, and in the process of me learning, and when Ms. Brown get home tonight, she gonna ask me, now what she was up there talking about? And I'm paying eighteen dollars, so guess what? I gotta be to answer her question. And I better answer it right, 'cause now, give what she gonna say, well, let me talk to Tracy, 'cause I don't think you were paying attention. So, so, when we, we get up here, we have to be prepared to answer these questions, or find an answer to these questions. So, I'm gonna ask questions, it don't matter who you are, and I had, I'm gonna call a young lady, I had a young lady talk to me a week ago, and she say, Councilman Wells, you're not in my district, but I want you pass by, look at my yard, and I appreciate how you make it what everybody can understand. And that's all I've been trying to do from day one, since I've been up here, because I want everybody to be able to understand. And if I don't understand, I'm gonna ask you the question again, and if I don't understand, I'm gonna ask you the question again, and if I don't understand, I'm gonna ask you a question again, until President Kip say, Councilman Wells, I got the answer for you, just wait till the meeting over with, then I'm gonna tell you, and I'm gonna say, uh, President Kip, well, I got the vote on it now, so I need the answer now. And I'ma say, uh, President Kip, well, I got the vote on it now, so I need the answer now. So I just wanna let you know, I'm always gonna have questions. So just be prepared when you come up here before us.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I enjoy answering questions. I enjoy researching and finding out answers for the council. I believe that is my obligation to you, so that you can make the best decisions for Hammond. That's why I sent this a month ago, so that we could start the dialogue, since we need to get prepared for what direction we're going in. So I appreciate that.
Larry, go ahead.
Yes, Jack Stevens, four, seven, one, nine, eight, Scott Drive. You'd like to know, is Barbara Talos Express DMV a privately owned business?
Yes.
I got one question. How much of the eighteen dollars are we actually getting out of that? Do you know?
I think it all comes here, but I will check that for you and give you a hundred percent answer.
Okay, I'll just check it. And then that question that Carly asked about the balance, um, yeah, if that didn't get closed out, where would those funds go? Could we, yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions from the, I can research them and bring them next one.
I make a motion myself to go ahead and table this item here, until we get some further clarification on some of those answers. Uh, the review of the contract, uh, the leasing agreement as well. That way, if we, if we were to pull out of this, I wouldn't, wouldn't want to put us in a bind or anything like this to clarify that. I'm sorry, go ahead, Larry.
This is a general question from some constituents. How, how much lead time does the council receive information prior to the meeting?
In this instance, I think she just said it was a month.
Sometimes, uh, uh, two days before the meeting, sometimes three days before the meeting. It all depends on, uh, what you need or what you looking for. So it ain't like this, this time, this'll come out a month in advance, but normally, nothing come out in a month in advance. We do the insurance all the time, and that's almost a million dollars. And you heard a couple weeks ago how long he had that information. So we really don't too much know what goes on or what gonna take place.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Andre.
No, there's a motion, there's a motion on the, to table.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
No.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion approved to table.
All right.
Uh, resolution number three on the agenda.
A request for support in the submission of a seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two application to the Juvenile Justice and Reliquency Prevention Formula Grants Program to establish a voluntary intervention support and mentoring program for juveniles at risk of entering a criminal justice system. Show us motion.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a program-based opportunity we have. Um, the dollar amount is set by the district, law enforcement district in which we are located. Um, they fund one program up to the amount of their allocation. So we were competing against other programs in our district. Um, they tend to fund a program for about two years. Looking at the history of our applications, I think this may be a year where they may go look at new programs. And we previously had presented a program very similar to this and gotten some positive feedback from the district. So we're looking for approval to go ahead and submit that application. There's no match requirement that this would be straight funding to the police department.
Any questions from the council? Anyone from the public?
No, sir.
Hold up.
Good evening, Councilwoman.
Good evening.
Mayor, and everyone. So, when Tracy Wells, six, ten, one, nine, eight. When I pulled this up online, I just have the resolution. Do you all have a package of the grant submission and like how it would be used? Or, like in the event, I'm not trying to put the words before, before the card, but in the event that you get the grant, how would it be used? Like is it, would it be administered by, uh, private public partnership mentoring program? Would it be administered by HPD itself? Or, um, how would the funds actually be, um, utilized? Because I think this is a great opportunity, anytime we can, um, intervene with juveniles, um, that's a good thing. But I just wanted to know, are you all aware of how the program would be set up?
You want me to answer that question?
Please.
So procedurally, as, as I think that explains the council in the past, um, our policy in grants is to prevent all applications that are pending to the council, to make sure that you support those applications before we submit them. And of course, if we are successfully getting funding, we come back to you for your approval of a grant contract and all the obligations that go along with that, including the money, right? We, of course, want to accept the money, but there are requirements to go with that. You typically don't see the application, because we need your support before we start work on the application. There are some exceptions, and some of the bigger grants, we do start getting going before we come to the council. But generally, we want to make sure that you're on board. We want to make sure we answer any questions you may have and that the community may have. Uh, this would be a program, uh, it would be a pilot program, run through the police department, uh, managed by the grants department, just like we manage all of our grants programs. The idea would to be to enable a number of juvenile officers, um, somewhere between four and five, to work overtime hours. Um, this would include mentoring, intervention, um, any type of activities with what are called ungovernable offenses. These are offenses that don't necessarily meet the standard for criminal offense, but tend to lead to criminal activity if they're not, if they're not addressed early. So this is an alternative to parents, guardians, the grandparents, who may have children that are misbehaving, they're not, again, meeting the requirement of a, of a criminal offense. We would allow them to voluntarily invite our officers to come in, to mentor those children, to make sure that they are not going to be engaged by our criminal justice system.
You have a question?
I, I agree. My question was just, well, my, Ms. Tracy answered, I mean, at, the question that I was wanting to ask also, who is gonna, how is it gonna be ran, who is gonna do it? And is that the police department?
Charles. Yeah, the, the police department will implement that, the juvenile division, the officers who don't usually implement the program. My department, the grants department, is responsible for administering the program. So we're responsible for reporting to the funder, in this case, the capital district and to our state, to let them know if our, our goals and objectives are being met. We're also there to engage with the juvenile officers and the police department administration to let them know whether goals and objectives are not being met, to make modifications as we go. This is a pilot program, so there'll be some things to work out as we go. It is modeled somewhat on an older program that was, that existed probably under Mason Foster's terms, but we're talking maybe his second term. So this is something that I've been talking with the police department, they're very eager to bring back. They think it's a way of, again, engaging with youth before their activities reach that standard of being criminal, and hopefully give them alternatives to criminal activity.
Yeah, so what you're saying is that, and, and what I'm, I'm gonna be clear, that if parents, if grandparents have, uh, a, a child with behavior problems, you, that, that, one of the officers that you've assigned to this program will be called in to mentor that youth? Okay.
That, that is correct, yes. I imagine there will be a, a process procedure for connecting with the juvenile divisions with an officer. Again, this is, this is a voluntary program, so that parent guardian needs to engage with us. We wouldn't just come out without that voluntary solicitation from the parent and guardian.
Now, um, years ago, up under the previous mayor, Grace Gass, uh, Judge Gassaway had a similar program, I forget what the name of it was. I was one of those parents that participated, I was a volunteer that participated to mentor those youth that we're talking about, that the parents have behavior with. And I was very, it was very successful, because we had, um, uh, uh, persons that was mentoring the youth, that know what they are going through, know what they've been through, and have been through some of the same things, and know exactly how to help these children. So that's what I'm getting at. The police, to me, doing it through the police department, to me, that's not, I'm just, I can't say, it's not a good idea. Now, that's just my opinion, because like I said, the program that, um, uh, Judge, uh, Gassaway had, it was a very good program, and a lot of, uh, adults volunteered with the same, with, with the same program, and it was very successful.
Do I need to say my name again? Okay. Nana. Okay, all right. Um, so I'm looking at this grant program, and this is through the Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement, correct? Capital District. My question is, the previous program that you said under the other mayor, how successful was it? What type of measures did you see the, the success rate? Um, and also to, I forget what your name is, Ms. Sandra. For a point about getting community volunteers engaged, like I write grants for, um, I have several grants right now with my agency, with the Louisiana Law Enforcement Commission, and involving volunteers, sometimes it is a requirement. I'm not sure if it's for that, because there's no match. But I'm just curious about the amount that you're requesting for, and you're saying three officers were in the past. That doesn't seem like a lot of funding for three officers dedicated to that. I'm just thinking for my organization, to fund three people, that doesn't give you little room to do some of the other services that we would want to focus on, those who are benefiting from it. So I'm just, I know that this is just to get, uh, permission from the council to do that, but I'm just thinking, forward thinking when you're writing this grant proposal, to really, like, to get the most impact of your dollars if you're gonna put towards all officers, or you have a combination with some other funding to help support the officers, so they're partially funded with this grant as well as something else. But I definitely agree with Ms. Sandra about having community involvement, because to build that relationship, and to the point earlier about community policing, I feel like this can be a set towards engaging that for the prevention.
I'll, I'll try to respond to both of those points. Um, this, this particular opportunity is open to criminal justice agencies. That includes police departments, the court system, DA's offices, but entities that are involved with criminal justice. So this isn't necessarily an opportunity for nonprofit. However, um, again, this is a pilot program. So part of the program will be learning as we go, and hopefully coming up with a program that is sound and that works really well, modeled after an older program. I don't have the specifics on how well or effective that program was, and my understanding is it was very effective. So there would be an opportunity, as this program develops, to, to engage with the community, certainly. Um, and I, I think that the juvenile officers would agree that that's a component, um, not just working with family members, but working within the community to make sure that the views in that community are, are giving divergence to potentially criminal activity.
I got one question, this, this is a good, just one real, one question. Does there requirement when you do the grant? Does, does it stipulate that you have to use law enforcement to do the work or the, to, to the same just point? When you write the grant, would you be able to expand beyond just law enforcement? Or does it require that a law enforcement officer administer the program? Like, you know, you know, I hear, I know sometimes it makes some crazy, you know, the word reimagining how we do law enforcement has been a big topic in America, but if you reimagine how we do things, can you reimagine that in this space? This is where you can use maybe somebody who's not a law enforcement officer, but maybe somebody who has social, who are in the social, um, social health or mental health, not necessarily mental, but people who work in our social, um,
Services.
Social services, entities that can collaborate with law enforcement. Is that what they, can you write that into the grant, or is that, no, that was a question?
So what I will say is this, um, the last time we applied for this program, it was around fifty-seven thousand dollars. There's more money available this time. That's all that's available from the grant. I'm not the one who would decide whether the police department or any other city department would put funding into the project. But that's possible. But if it's the consensus of the community and this council, that they would like to see some type of community person represented, I can discuss that with the police department and see if there's a role for such a thing. We have to make sure that, of course, that's applicable. Um, right now, the way this is kind of envisioned operating is that those four or five officers that would be working would be working overtime. So it's not like we're paying for four new officers for the entire year. We're paying for four or five officers to work overtime in addition to their normal hours. One scenario that I can see this being is that, you know, you encounter a juvenile in the course of a complaint that's filed. There's noise in the park, so you go out, you encounter juveniles. Rather than arrest those juveniles, you speak with their parents or guardians, and if they're willing, you then mentor those children, so they can avoid being arrested. But that's done in overtime hours. So in addition to the standard juvenile detective's role, this would be overtime to allow them to kind of follow up, if you will, on those children who are at risk.
Who the officer are? Uh, do you, you know, do you know that?
I, I don't have that in front of me, no, sir. That could change by the time that the grant is awarded.
Those grants, excuse me, the only grants, because when I was, when I was a mentor in the program, the young lady, and they told me things they're not gonna tell their parents, and they're not gonna tell an officer. And, and a lot of the, I'm, I'm here in this, in this town sixty-two years. I know it like the back of my hand, and some, when it comes to, um, social work, and I'm also, I'm also an educator. And children need somebody that they can identify with before they're gonna feel comfortable in talking. That's the reason why.
So Ms. Sand, I'mma ask you, and I'mma ask you this here. So, Mr. Charles, you see what the people asking for? And I'm talking about, we don't need to say that nobody said nothing. So we looking at this here grant here. So in the process of writing another grant, everything they speaking of, and I'm talking about, she got proof that it worked. She not just talking off her head, just, so what I'm saying, if we know this here work with Judge Gassaway, why we didn't try it again?
Well, we can try it here. And Sandra and I have talked about what she's done, where she's been, how she's been educated, and what she can do for the community, because people can identify with her. So there's no reason why she can't volunteer, she can't be a part of this, or someone similar to her.
One important thing to note is that typically, I'm not saying in every case, but typically, these types of grants that come through the district law enforcement offices like this one is, typically, those funds are used to pay for some type of overtime. Sometimes they're, they're used to hiring new officers. I would have to go back and look specifically at this particular year's funding opportunity and see if funds could be allocated to a community liaison, perhaps. Um, but typically, again, typically, these funds are used by law enforcement agencies or other criminal justice agencies to, to pay for overtime or staffing costs, or whatever you want to call it, associated with the program's implementation. Anytime we add a program that doesn't exist, there's a cost associated with it. This is one way to add a program to our juvenile division and cover that cost, and, and have a pilot year where, again, we can look at how it's working, and if it's working well, great, keep it the way it is. I'm of the opinion that there's always room for improvement. So if, if there's things that we can do better, if there's feedback in the community that we can use that can improve the program, if there's a role for community members or community organizations in our program, we're certainly open to that.
So how much does that actually cost us for that grant? At seventy-one thousand, is it?
Zero dollars.
Zero dollars, so it's a hundred percent?
It's a hundred percent, yes, sir.
Since you were speaking about using the money for... Since you were speaking about using the money for overtime, I'm just putting it out there, when you're writing grants, it's always useful to kind of look at, like, some like you were saying, that they funded in the past, and also other programs, how they utilize the overtime, because, like, current, in Louisiana, I'm, I'm not a law enforcement agency, I run a nonprofit focused on serving domestic violence and sexual assault survivors, but when I was a executive director of a nonprofit in West Virginia, I wrote a grant that incorporated law enforcement and prosecutors, and we had money set aside for overtime for law enforcement to serve domestic violence petitions and other things like that. The law enforcement agency wasn't spending down the money for that, with their overtime. I don't know why, there was still domestic violence that was rampant, so if it's just focused on that and get that, like, you gotta find out creative ways as you know how to spend down the money before you're not gonna get repeat funding, but if there, if there's any way, if there is money that can be set aside for community liaison, or whatever, or if not, just say that you can write in a grant, "We would like to partner with community volunteers," you can still do that, have that good faith and build that within the grant to so that, hey, we really wanna make a difference, this is the dollars that we're using towards natural manpower, but our community connection, how we're really gonna engage with those youth to be more successful. So, I just wanted to bring up that point. I think this is a great opportunity, and we need it, from what we have shared here just today, but just like people were saying, for future grants or whatever, to think about that, in that, I don't know, you would know, Chief, more than I do, about possible overtime usage for doing these specific things with juvenile offenses and prevention, but I'm just putting it out there, because sometimes that money doesn't always get used for overtime, and you can have a little bit, if you just focus on that and you don't have another area expended, I know that district, and I know Louisiana, I know the law enforcement commission, they can be very specific, saying you can't designate that to anything else. So, that's why I'm just suggesting for this, for future, to free it up, so assign it as a district, and you might be doing that if you run.
Larry, anyone from you two?
Yes, sir.
I, the only thing I'll add is that, again, the, the, we have to follow the guidance in the grant application, you know, the grant opportunity, to say what we can and cannot fund. Like, like I said, traditionally, typically, these funds have been used to pay for program implementation, that means overtime. As far as overtime grants go, we have an example of that, the traffic safety grant, which I previously brought to this council. Part of my role is to make sure that we aren't leaving money on the table. The last thing I wanna do as a grants manager is leave money on the table. I want us to spend every cent of a grant that we receive. That actually helps us get funding for the next year. You know, it's kinda like when we come to the US Department Heads and ask for you to reapprove our budgets. Well, if we didn't spend our budget last year, there's a likelihood that you might reduce our budget this year. So we wanna make sure that on these grants, we're spending the money to them, down to the penny, and, and for the purpose or purposes for which it is intended, for, you know, goals and objectives that we state in the application. Not community volunteerism, if that's something that might be interested, you might be interested in doing, you might be interested in volunteering to this program, that helps to bolster our application. We can say that there are community members and community groups who are willing to volunteer their efforts to help by law enforcement, that helps us secure, helps our chances.
Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Motion to approve.
Resolution number four.
A resolution one, accepting a ninety-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-two grant from the airport coronavirus response grant program to prevent, prepare, for, and respond to the COVID-19 pandemic at Hammond North Shore Regional Airport, and two, authorizing the mayor or his designated complete and signed related documents. Sean Brocher.
This is actually the second round of coronavirus-related funding that was passed by President Trump before he left office. There's actually a third round of funding that was approved by President Biden in March that's still to come down. These funds, like the previous funds that the airport received, can only be used by the airport. In fact, these funds are even more prescriptive in terms of how much can be used for the general aviation of the airport, and how much can be used for the tower. This is an allocation based on a formula, this is how much we're gonna receive, this is how much we have to spend. There are very specific things on which we can, can spend it, and things we can't spend it on. Here, we're asking you to basically allow us to enter into that contract to accept those funds, and go ahead and spend them at the airport on, which would make critical related expenses.
Any questions from the council? Anyone from the public? Anyone from you two?
No, sir.
Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells. Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Resolution number five.
A resolution to purchase an Ford F-150 XL in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars from B. H. Ford, state contract four-four-zero-zero-zero-two-zero-eight-seven-four. Chief votes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are y'all? Good. So, just asking about your approval to purchase, it's off state contract, but we did, we're allowed to offer it to build it forward, this is a local dealership, they got it three percent over what state contract is, so we're asking a purchase from them to keep that house.
Any questions from the council? Anyone from the public? Anyone from you two?
No, sir.
Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells. Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Resolution number six.
A resolution to, a resolution to equip the Kenny Recreation Center with the backup generators, by one, authorizing the expenditure up to a hundred and fifty thousand for generators, materials, and supplies, two, using the hundred thousand dollars allocated in the FY twenty-twenty-one budget for the Kenny City Generators, and using fifty thousand dollars from the after-school program, one zero zero five zero five zero zero dash five six zero one three one, and three, authorizing a purchase of two generators from R. Coles for a total cost of a hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-five cents, under state contract, Lacy Landry.
So we're here to talk about the generator again, at the Recreation Center. I think we've explained the need for this multiple times, and I think we just needed to come to a way to fund it. So, in looking at everything, the council has already approved the hundred thousand that was left in the budget to go to the generator. We just need up to forty, possibly fifty thousand for the total installation of the generator. That'll include the concrete pad, all the electrical wiring, and everything else, the Atmos gas lines come to it, everything involved with it. And what we're proposing to do, since we were not able to have the after-school program this year, there's already seventy-five thousand dollars that was allocated there, we would use, and we're asking for your permission to use up to fifty thousand for the generator only, not to go anywhere else, just for the generator. This is actually two generators, because the way that the building has two different feeds on it, it needs to be two separate generators to, to power the different sides of the building. Jana dutifully researched again the state contract, found out that this contract is actually gonna be a rebid, with the possibility of cost escalation at the end of the month. So that's why we're bringing this as one last attempt this fiscal year, to hopefully get a generator for the Recreation Center, that will indeed benefit the after-school program, because there have been times when the lights have gone out, and all the parents get called, and the kids go home. The same has happened at summer camp, and this also functions as a disaster shelter following the flood and other disasters.
Do we get funds from that being a disaster?
No, sir.
Okay. So, the generator's purpose, pretty much, you're saying is to make sure lights go out for the after-school care that, that we have at that facility? And about how many, how many times it goes out, summer programs, it goes out, how many times per year?
I think it's happened four to five different times a year, when the kids all have to, I mean, like, everybody has to leave them, because you wait about thirty minutes, but if you've got small kids wandering around, you've got somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and twenty, then you've gotta call the parents, the parents have to come from work, pick up their kids, they lose the whole day of the after-school program, they lose possibly a whole day of summer camp. We know how important it is to be helping parents with children.
Any more questions?
I will just commend you guys on finding the extra money for this, you know, unfortunately, the after-school care program couldn't happen, but this would be, I think, a good use of that money, 'cause it's something, I know I've talked to Desiree and the other guys over there, they really, really want this, and so, good job on finding the money, in my opinion.
I really wish we could have the program this year, I know they, the kids have missed it, the workers have missed it, but, and all the transportation issues, we just weren't able to do it, so hopefully, coming this fall, we are having summer camp, so that's exciting.
Anyone from the public? Anyone from you two?
No, sir.
Pleasure to counsel.
I make a motion to approve.
Say.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells. Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, thank you. I know Desiree will probably personally call each one and say thank you, from the bottom of her heart.
Next on the agenda, final adoption of ordinance, none. Next on the agenda, introduction of ordinance is set for public hearing. Introduction number one.
Introduction of an ordinance to adopt the city appointment budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, in accordance with the procedures of section five dash zero-three of the city charter, Lacy Landry.
So tonight, we present to you the city's budget, it is in the binders that are in front of you, and we're very fortunate to have Laura Hammond over here, who dedicated countless hours to helping create this budget. So, it's been a real team effort, there were a lot of things that we had to get straight, and we are very happy to deliver that to you. We will have the budget work session, which is an holiday public hearing, anyone from the public is invited to come, and the department heads will all present their different aspects of the budget. We'll have lots of questions, lots of, we will try to have as many answers as we can that day, but we're giving you this now. The budget work session day is June eleventh, will start at eight AM, eight-thirty? Eight-thirty, we'll start at eight-thirty. And, we're excited. So, it will come up for final adoption, hopefully towards the end of June, June twenty-second, looks like the last Tuesday of that monthly meeting. There'll be a public hearing that night, and then a vote on the final adoption.
I want to just state, so, I've already looked through it, 'cause I couldn't wait to get it, and I hope that, I know I will, and I hope the mother council members will, will have a list of questions ready, hopefully even sent before our work session, because we only have, what, eleven days from our work session to then vote on it, and that's not a lot of time, we all, this is all part-time gig here, so, I really think it's important, and I urge all of us to pick this apart before June eleventh. And if I remember our very first budget session, I didn't know anything about this, I sent Lacy a bunch of questions, said, "I'm gonna ask these at the budget session," so she had all of those answers ready to go, and that's just good government, that's a good way of doing things. So I hope that we cannot have surprises, and, and we don't have to have a delay in, in adopting our budget. It's just my two cents.
Absolutely. I concur one hundred percent.
We'll also note that under the administration tab, you'll find the details about the applications that have been sent to the council prior, to help give some kind of supportive information about that request.
Any other comments? Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells. Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Motion approved to introduce, public hearing is set for June twenty-second, twenty-two twenty at five-thirty, and the budget work session is set for June eleventh, twenty-twenty-one at eight-thirty, AM.
Good.
AM.
You might be here all day.
All day.
AM.
All right. Item number two for introduction.
Introduction of an ordinance to adopt reinstated tax on all taxable property within the corporate limits of Hammond for year twenty-twenty-one. Public works at two meals, general alimony at nine point zero four meals, and police and fire set at ten point, ten meals, a little total of twenty-one point zero four meals, Lacy Landry.
This is an annual requirement to adopt officially our mileage rates. This says what we will be charging for the property taxes come the end of the year. You adopt them in the first part of the year, fortunately, this is not a reassessment year, so we don't have a lot of other hoops to go through, this is kind of more straightforward. We do adopt them by ordinance, because this is a, a rate. These are the voter-approved charges. The general alimony comes actually from state law, but these others are voter-approved rates, there is no increase to this levy, there are no changes to this, this is what the citizens of Hammond have been paying for many years.
Counsel, any questions? Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells. Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Motion approved, public hearing is set for May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one at five-thirty.
All right.
PM.
Third item for introduction of ordinance.
Introduction of an ordinance to approve an expanded condition of use requested by Betty L. Brown owner to allow placement of a manufactured home meet all code requirements on block seven, block seven, Greenville Park Edition, located at one zero eight West Green Street, zone RS three, Z twenty-twenty-one zero four zero 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 nine zero. The zoning commission recommend a pool with conditions. One, this approval is with the understanding that such use is a personal right that expires upon a change in occupancy or ownership of Betty L. Brown, and two, the manufactured home must meet all requirements of placement and must be constructed to meet the latest HUD standards.
No.
No.
Mr. Vaughn's.
Okay.
No one's here?
Tracy is gone.
Tracy's not with us. The zoning board, zoning commission was in favor. It's an area that's District Three, that does have several mobile homes in the general vicinity of this address, on a league west green. This, Ms. Brown is purchasing a new mobile home, she submitted photographs of what the proposed mobile home would be, so it's two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, and it does meet the minimum requirements for HUD, which were modified back to nineteen ninety-four, so it meets those requirements.
Any questions from the council? Can I get a motion to introduce?
Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Public hearing is set for May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one.
All right, in closing, quote from a long time leader from a long ago, Dr. Martin Luther King said, "The time is always right to do right." Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
All in favor?
Aye.
Me to adjourn.